The meeting to order at 7:04 PM. We'll let the minutes reflect that all the board members are present along with some members of the staff and we have some guests that we'll get to in a moment. We do have the minutes from April 30th and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of April 30th.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All right, the minutes will stand approved as written. Thank you Lisa, as always. Monthly reports, all monthly reports have been received, so thank you to all of our department heads. And we'll move on to public hearings. No public hearings this evening, but we do have some guests. We'll start with Amy. And Jim, if you would kick this off, introduce us to Amy and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Tony. Yes, I had the pleasure of meeting Amy recently. This is Amy Albano. She is looking to take over a space within the property 2091 five mile line road. Barbara Lombardo is the proprietor of that property and one's a hair salon and other things. Amy wants to take over the second floor?
Sure.
We'll let you talk a little bit about it.
Sure.
You are basically replacing an entity that is similar to yours and I'll let you explain that to the board.
Okay. It's actually almost identical to what I want to do. I'm not taking, I wouldn't be taking over the entire floor, just two rooms of it and a hallway and part of the bathroom. And I'll be doing chemical peels, facials, chemical peels would be under 40%, so they're not medical grade, makeup, and then the normal aesthetics, waxing, et cetera. So I would be performing all of those in those two rooms, maybe eventually, hopefully, I would be able to hire one or two employees underneath me. So, and I've been doing it for 15 years, so it's been a long time.
Where have you been?
I was at Elizabeth Arden Red Door in Connecticut for 12 of those years and prior to that I was in Boston.
So, this is new to the area?
She just moved here.
I like, I live in Penfield.
I do, yep.
Less than 20 minutes from wake-ments.
Yes.
Missed that conversation.
Thirty seconds for a wake-ment.
Do you need any type of licenses?
I do, I do have a, yep, I have a New York State license.
Okay.
Yeah. And I've held that for...
You got a logo, you got a sign?
I wish I did. My husband is looking, he's working on my logo right now. We had a graphic design artist come up with some stuff that we weren't happy with, so my husband's now reconfiguring and doing things, but I'd be happy to drop that off to y'all.
You can send it via email and I'll be dropping it off, but it will be important for them to review that. And that's the sign that's going to be put on the front, on the freestanding sign out front.
On the director.
Correct. It's what it would just pop into the existing signage.
Exactly, yeah.
So Jim, are you, this is streamlined?
Yes, it is.
And so, to start with, Amy, you'll be just yourself and then you will add up to two others?
Correct.
As you build your practice?
Yes.
And typically, what is an appointment, time-wise?
For me, I believe 75 minutes. A lot of people do them in 50 to 60. I don't.
Okay.
So mine will be 75 minutes for a facials, predominantly for waxing. It can vary from 15 minutes to an hour and a half depending on what body part it is.
Got it.
And for peels, it would be under an hour.
Okay. And you indicate, oh, I'm sorry, you indicate in your, in your letter that there are 16 current spaces that are there and based on the BA SNPs plus your operation, you believe that that is sufficient?
More than sufficient. And we also are, as a team, we park across the street.
So the folks that, that work out of the facility park across the street?
Correct.
Free up all the spaces for them?
Exactly.
Where across the street?
I guess there's, there's a parking lot right across the street.
Oh, you mean by the warehouse? Okay. Do you have some idea for hours that you'll be open?
Well, I'm definitely going to be closed Sunday, Monday, so I'm thinking probably nine to eight because I will be the sole proprietor. I can kind of come and go in between appointments, but it leaves a long day for somebody to be able to book an appointment.
Right.
So, and that's what I'm kind of used to anyway.
That'd be Tuesday through Friday and then shorter on Saturday or longer?
Probably the same hours on Saturday. Yeah, at least for the beginning. I think when you open up a business, you have to put in your time, so.
So how many clients would you suspect propose for a day? If you, 75 minutes, that's long.
For a facial?
Yep.
I'm used, I used to work Saturdays at EA from about eight in the morning till seven o'clock in the afternoon and I would do about eight, seven or eight in a day. And that's, you know, to build the business, I'm going to have to kind of make sacrifices to take and to offer the hours. It doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to work all those hours.
No, you're going to have lunch and break.
And I also have to build, of course, yeah, and then I have to build up my client base, so once I do the hours, then I will lower them.
It doesn't sound like you're adding a lot of, to the parking situation or anything.
No. No, I mean, I have probably...
I think it sounds good.
Yeah.
Amy, the license that you have through New York State is what?
It's an aesthetic license.
Okay.
There's different divisions, there's cosmetology, there's nail, and then there's aesthetics. To do what I do, I need an aesthetics license which I was granted the first month and I was grandfathered in based on the hours that I had proven from the state of Connecticut.
Okay. Okay. Board, other questions?
You just gotta wait for the logo sign, otherwise, sounds good?
Yep.
Staff, anything that hasn't been put on the record that we should have on the record?
She's answered all the questions. We will get that signed to you as quickly as possible and I'll be with that. I think we'll be outside. Sites in compliance, we have, we have no violations on the sites.
That was going to be my next question. Has Fire Marshall visited the site?
We haven't been around each other too long.
Yeah, right.
Are you thinking resolution for Wednesday?
I was actually thinking, you know, what we do typically is a letter comes from Castello on behalf of the town board, so he'll put that together, send it out for our review and then we'll get it out over the next, you know, three to five days.
That letter has conditions of approval that they have to comply with.
Okay. So, if we're good with that, that's what we'll do. Any questions for us?
No, but what you just mentioned, do I have to be a proactive participant in that?
No.
Okay.
We'll be sending you, it'll be a letter that gives you conditions of approval that you have to comply with.
Okay.
In terms of maintaining parking requirements and all those sorts of things.
Okay.
Compliance with state codes and all that. There will be a permit fee, there's a permit fee of $100 that you'll have to pay, it's a one-time fee.
Of course.
And then after that, it's just getting your sign and getting that taken care of and you're all set.
Okay, great. And I can, I can email you the sign design?
You certainly can.
Okay, great. All right, we should have that in the next couple of days.
When would you like to open?
June 1st, I take over the space, but I believe that June 15th is our target date at this point.
Okay.
And that's with our fingers crossed.
It should be no target from our end at least.
Great.
I didn't understand what you said.
It should be no problem, at least from our end as far as your approval.
Oh, perfect, good. That's awesome, thank you. And I hope you guys come to see me.
They need relief.
And I need a lot of work, so I'm beyond, I'm beyond the work.
I'll tell you what, for your cooperation here today, just come on in.
He needs a good peel.
All right. Okay, if nothing else, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome to Penfield.
Thank you.
We look forward to a very long and successful business as part of our four corners and who knows, you may see one of these young ladies here.
I do see them.
I'll speak for the guys, we're beyond help, so.
[laughter]
We'll admire, we'll admire the ladies and the work that you do on the ladies.
All right, perfect.
All right, thank you Amy. We appreciate it.
You guys, thank you for having me.
Thanks. All right, be well.
Have a great night.
Okay, so then we will move on to our second, we'll move on to our second guest this evening and from there.
I give you so much advice.
Yeah, you may, you may need that, Amy. You may need that.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, right, right on. All right, Mr. Castello, I know that we all probably know Jake or have met Jake or have seen Jake before, but Jake requested an opportunity to come in and chat with the board after he and I met now roughly a week or close to a week ago and wanted to share some general information with the board. And with that, the floor is, the floor is yours, sir.
Sure. My name is Jake Harrington. I'm the general manager of land for Ryan Homes/NVR. I handle the upstate region which consists of Rochester, Syracuse, and Buffalo. My role with the company is to provide Ryan Homes finished building lots, work with a diverse group of people to, and municipalities to develop dirt and bring it to finished lots. The reason for my meeting tonight to talk to you guys is that, is not to kind of rehash what Passerol's been through, I don't think that's necessary. I think that we've kind of, we're all comfortable with that, but kind of what we're up against at this point is that these projects are, they're next to impossible at this point to make work based on the dollars and cents. The market, the housing market, has not gone up with the cost of development and the cost to build homes. And every time an engineer comes in here or somebody comes in here that's paid by a developer, it just continues to increase the bill. You know, the example I can share, and I think some of you guys were around for, when I was in here with the Berry Turkey Farm, is we spent $127,000 to basically go to nothing. And, you know, my goal as a good partner to a developer is for them not to waste money. I want them to maximize their investment and potentially do business with Ryan Homes in the future. And I guess to get to the point, the reason I'm here is to talk about density and what density everybody's comfortable with. There's been several board members that have said, "It's too dense" or, you know, "I like the project, but, you know..." But there's no numbers to it. So, I thought it would be beneficial to kind of share with you guys a little bit about what happens before we get to this point. So how do we look at these developments and how do we try to make sense of where to go and how we get there? And I think that would kind of help you guys. When you guys see this, it's, you know, here's the land, here's the lots, you know, this is what we need, but there's really nothing behind it. And there's really a lot that goes into putting one of these deals together. You know, just to give you an example, you know, I've been working with the Rubino family for, you know, on and off for probably seven years, going through this project. Never really made sense. I've taken probably every site contractor in town to go to them, to buy them out. We could never make the numbers work. So when I say make the numbers work, develop, bring a finished building lot to market and a house that is going to meet the demand of what can happen. We don't make the market, we serve the market. And every time I went down that road with a developer, it died. So after many, many years, the group decided, the only way we're going to ever get any money out of this property is to develop it ourselves. And, but, they're not developers. I mean, they're from a sub shop owner to a financial planner to, there's 14 of them total. So John and I, many, many late nights, kind of put bookends on this and how do we make this work? And the density wasn't a number, we said, "Let's just see how much money we can make." You know, "Let's jam as many houses as we can in there and, you know, you guys got to make $5 million, you can't do it." It never came from that. It came from, you know, what's the hard cost? What's the soft cost? What's the land cost? And what's the off-site infrastructure? And where does that end? You know, and, you know, our target for a lot in Penfield is under $60,000. And you guys probably say, "Well, why?" Because if you take a lot, finished lot price and you multiply it by .18, that's your finished lot, or your finished house cost, excuse me. So, you know, $60,000 lot's going to drive out about a $328,000 house. So what we do with that is we overlay it with what's going on in the marketplace, okay? And we typically know that if you look at the existing market, you are going to sell about 28% of new homes to what the existing home is in different price buckets. So that drives out, you know, approximately, you know, 20 to 22 homes a year at this site at a $60,000 lot price. That's how we came up with the numbers. Now, when we first started going through this, even with them as the landowner, we couldn't make it work with the pump station in Forest Main, and that's where Gary Smith came in. Because you're putting $600,000 over 100 lots versus 200 lots, obviously it's a lot, a lot easier to absorb. So that's, that's kind of how we arrived at the 207 was, you know, how do we come to the market with a house that can sell? And obviously, anybody that does this, it's an investment and investment's a risk. So what's the risk versus reward and is it worth doing a development? And that's kind of what happened with Ben Berry is that we got down the road and the margins were so light that it didn't make sense for anybody to go forward and develop the property. And, you know, and just going through this, this project, this developer has to put up $2.1 million before we buy one building lot. So, you know, and I go in front of a lot of municipalities and I think, "Oh, these developers are getting rich, they're getting rich." I don't know if I would take that risk. I don't know if I would put $2 million in the ground in the hope that Ryan Homes is going to come in and they're going to start buying $60,000 lots. So that, that's kind of the thought process that goes through it. Now, with that being said, we're very good at what we do. You guys know that. We build a lot of houses in the town. But if a project doesn't work, we move on to the next one. Because the last thing we want to do is put a project together, put a $400,000 model up, they've got $2 million in the ground, six months comes, we haven't sold a house and we have to go in the room and scratch our heads saying, "Hey, I'm sorry you spent $2 million, I spent 400, but this isn't working." So that's kind of how we look at this and we want to be a good partner with everybody that we work with and we want everybody to win. And not for it to hurt anybody, any way, shape, or form. And if you drive around any of the municipalities, there's no distressed subdivisions, especially from our, from our end. We know what we're doing when we get in there, we come to market with the right price and we get through them. I mean, you go through any subdivision from Newberry Park to Graceland, there's not one, there's not one lot in there that's not built on. So that's kind of, you know, if that helps you guys a little bit with how we got to where we are, and then what I'd like to do is just talk about the density and see what you guys feel comfortable with and talk about how the, the less lots affect the price and all that. And then at the end of the day, if you guys feel that, you know, 60 lots works, then we'll just move on to the next project. You know, and just the other thing, just when I look at, when I first look at a piece of land, every municipality has the exact same hot buttons. Steep slopes, wetlands. Am I removing a farm from the town? Is there a lot of clearing? Is safety, neighborhood impact? Is there benefits in the town? Is there sewer capacity? What's the school district enrollment? You know, those are all the, all the things that come up every time. And, and looking at this project, we really, it meets all the criteria that is a good development that I would go into. You know, typically, you know, you're trying to, you know, maybe hide a steep slope or a drumlin or something like that, but there's just, it's good. You're not taking a farm out of the town. You know, you're not, you're not taking down somebody's farm stand. It's just, it's just land that's sitting there, growing brush on it. So with that said, I mean, I'd like you guys, kind of your input on what you feel is a fair density to go forward with and see if it does make sense for, for us to even talk about it. Before we spend any more money is the goal.
Yeah, and I think as, as you and I spoke, Jake, one of the things that I, you know, cautioned, cautioned you was, you know, I appreciate every time a, an attorney or an engineer, you know, picks up a pen, strikes a key on a keyboard, the clock runs and so I was very, very, I think upfront to say...
Absolutely.
Make sure, make sure that there is a broader dialogue before we, you know, see any more plans by way of engineers and agreements and all those other types of things. Because that is, that is in fact a waste of dollars and resources until everyone is comfortable with, you know, what the next, with what the next direction is overall. I think the other thing that, you know, that I've mentioned to you is that certainly, you know, density and I, and I think I indicated that a couple of weeks ago now that we were together at work session is that certainly density is, is a factor that, that this board is, you know, concerned about. So, you know, everyone will have an opportunity if they so choose to weigh in on that. And then, you know, certainly the infrastructure component. And when I say infrastructure, you know, we've got to take a look at a lot of the infrastructure. So there's the sewer piece and more broadly, what you had put together and what we saw from Passerol was that the sewer that gets down to Shoe Craft Road, but certainly what that opens up is a much larger area. And so, one of the things that I think we need to, you know, have some conversations about is, is that what is that choke point or what is that, you know, capacity, excuse me, that capacity down there? And then, you know, how do you, you know, how do you just, you know, parcel that off accordingly so that, you know, there isn't, you know, perceived winners or perceived losers, you know, through that? So that, that's a piece. And then there's, you know, the, the traffic component and, you know, you did mention the fact that the land is a pretty pristine piece of land as it relates to EPods or anything like that. And so I understand what, you know, what your interest is of that property. And then, and then, and then getting down to, you know, what that, what that density is. And so, I think as I mentioned to you when we started that conversation last week, I don't, I don't, the benchmark, the benchmark that I have in my head today is, you know, the current zone for those properties is approximately 62. So that's kind of one end of the goalpost. The other end of the goalpost is, you know, what was presented at the 207. So this is what's permitted today and what we saw, I think, and again, as I spoke then two weeks ago and for now, I, I personally believe that 207 is too high. So the, the discussion that I think, the broader conversation that we need to have is what is that, what is that right number? What does that look like? How does that fit in with the comprehensive plan? How does that fit in with the infrastructure piece and things like that, so.
And the other thing, I mean, and all that is correct, is, you know, the, the big killer on this site is the $600,000 in offsites.
Right.
You know, and is there a way, and I've seen a million different things from a million different municipalities, you know? If that pump sta, you know, if the sewer was right there at the property, we could just tie into it, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't even be in here for 207 lots because you don't need them. I mean, it's, it's the 600,000 that you have to, you have to fit into it somewhere. You know, if there was a way to bond the pump station in Forest Main, if there was a way to create a sewer district and get it paid back by TAPS, you know, that, that could be a profit center for the town. I know, you know, in my Syracuse market, you know, most of the municipalities bond them. And we pay a TAP fee, there's a, there's a sewer usage fee every year, it's part of their taxes, and eventually that, that pump station's paid off and it's a profit center for the municipality. So, you know, if that, if that 600,000 came out of it, then the density is a different It's $3,000 a lot.
That's like, you know, that, it's interesting you bring it up. It's like a catch-22 though. I mean, which came first, the chicken or the egg? I mean, in order to build the homes, you have to have a pump station.
You do.
So, in essence, you don't need the pump station if you don't build that many homes. I mean, at some point, I think I had this conversation or this, this same comment when, when Passerol came in here the first time, which is, you know, in order to have that much infrastructure, you're looking for that many homes. I mean, maybe you don't need that much infrastructure if you don't want that many homes. I, you know, I, it's like a round robin.
And that becomes, that becomes what the town wants. I mean, and you're correct in the fact that if we're just building the pump station for this property, it could be a lot less expensive because you don't have to build as big of a pump. I mean, the Forest Main's the Forest Main, that's the cheap part of it. But you could build, you could build a pump station in Forest Main that just serves this property. And it's going to bring the price down dramatically. I mean, I couldn't tell you exactly because I'm not an engineer, but I know in my experience it can be a lot less.
It's a good point though, it's the infrastructure is driven by the size and density of the development.
Absolutely. Because in, you know, back to the 62 lots versus the 207, you know, regardless of how many lots you have, it's going to cost you $400 a linear foot of road, no matter what you do. Doesn't matter if it's 70 foot wide or it's 150 foot wide. You know, and, you know, just running some performance on 62 lots, it drives out an $85,000 lot, which is a $470,000 house. I'm not doing that project. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it in any town. Just, there's not enough buyers to buy houses at that price.
Sure.
So it's just a risk that's not worth taking for anybody. But I, you know, Rob, I, you know, I agree with you. I mean, it's, you know, we're trying, when we came in for the, for the pump station in Forest Main, we came, we came in excited because it's a benefit to the town, you know? And it's hard because we look at it as a benefit and then kind of it backfires on us because everybody's like, "Holy cow, now we're going to have, you know, 700 houses we can build here." Which is true, but at the end of the day, the property's already zoned what it's zoned. You guys control that as a board.
But we're not sure that's a benefit to the town.
Right. Exactly.
Having development, having development isn't necessarily a benefit if it's extensive development that's going to cause impacts.
Correct, yeah.
You're entitled to build 62 units. The intent of incentive zoning initially, when we first started this years and years ago, was to offset costs associated with excess facility charges.
Sure.
Things that you didn't have to deal with for others.
Mm-hmm.
If you had to deal with it for yourself, that was your cost and you dealt with it. So if you're telling us that it's a $600,000 cost to put a sanitary sewer in and it's a $60,000 lot and you need to offset that cost, I'm thinking you should be entitled to 10, 10 more lots to offset that $600,000 cost. So that would be 72 lots instead of 207.
But that's, that's the overall finished building lot. It still costs you $55,000 in cost to build the lot.
But that's the cost of doing business to be a developer. I mean, you, you're going to do that if you want to build houses.
And, and I don't disagree with you, but for that, for that type of margin, you don't get off the couch.
Well, we also have this discussion, it's not the first time we've had a discussion where we don't want the notion of incentive zoning to be clouded or the intent of incentive zoning to be cloudy. Because, you know, at the end of the day, you can't build a house unless you have the sewer.
Right.
It's, it's necessary to the building.
The incentive.
That to me is greater than, that's not an incentive to the town. It's a, it's a cost, infrastructural cost of buildings versus an amenity to the town in some other fashion.
Correct.
An improvement to the town. I think, we, and we've had this discussion, certainly it's not, it's not this...
Sure.
...potential project is certainly not unique in that regard in that most recently we have had the discussion of when, when a list of potential amenities is presented to us. We have crossed off some after further discussion to say, you know, "You'd have to do that anyways." So how, how is, you know, a cost of your building something that's an additional above and beyond amenity? So we're just mindful of that. I think with climate right now, we're mindful of that with respect to the sewer.
Have you calculated numbers to identify whether it'd be cost-effective for you to develop if you were to go to 20,000 square foot lots instead of quarter acre lots?
It, to me, it doesn't, it has, it all has to do with the width of the lot. It has no, to me, it's not square footage, it's how wide the lot is.
So if you were, if you were to use like a concept like 281, given the fact that you would need higher density than 62 units, but if you were to say, "We're going to go with 75 or 100 at that width lot and then have some green space area left over as remaining lands," is that something you, you could generate numbers to, to look at to see if it's doable?
75 to 100 lots, it's, it comes, it comes down to, can you do it? Absolutely. But as a developer, again, goes back to them putting two-million dollars in the ground.
It's how much money you want to make out of the project.
It depends. I mean, like, you know, right now, if it was, if I wasn't talking about this project with the landowner, it would be, it would be, it wouldn't even be here. You know, if somebody came in here to buy the land.
So for Mr. Rubino's property, how many units are you anticipating being put on that lot? A hundred and some odd units?
I can't remember the exact.
And there was another hundred and some odd units for Mr. Smith.
Call it a hundred and a hundred, a hundred and three, a hundred and four.
Which is the bigger parcel?
Uh, Smith is the bigger parcel.
I was going to say, Smith is the bigger by a little bit.
Is Smith the sixty-two eight?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And there, you can, you can build this with sixty-two lots, you can build it with a hundred lots, it just, it all comes down to, is a developer willing to take the risk? And not have the return? And it's, and it goes back to everyone in this room. Like, if, if you got to spend ten-million dollars to make three-hundred thousand, you've probably not, why would you do it? You're better off just staying, you know, it just doesn't make sense to do it.
And so, given the, the total combined acreage of the two parcels, the project as proposed, cannot be come to fruition without those parcels?
That's correct. It's, it's a hundred-and-nineteen total acres.
So for some reason, Mr. Smith decided at the last moment not to move forward with you, that would, that would jeopardize the project for you?
Yes, it would.
Or, or the Rubino.
Either one would, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Jake, I think to be honest with you, and we're talking a lot about densities and infrastructure, for me, I just think the two-hundred-and-seven is just too intense for this area right now. Not to say at some point in the future, maybe my attitude changes, but when I look at two-hundred-and-seven compared to what it's zoned for, I kind of look at it from a simplistic perspective, and it's just too big of a project for that area of town, for what I kind of envision or what I see there.
And, and, and we have this conversation a lot as well, this ant's bothering us over here. When, when you, when you come in with a project this big, and I, I almost hate, I hate coming in with big projects, because it scares people. They're like, holy cow. But it, to me, it's the same thing as if I have four sites in town going in different, you know, like right now. I mean, I have three active subdivisions. This project's going to, it's going to take ten years to build two-hundred lots. It's going to do twenty years, so it's not going to be an immediate impact. It's going to be two, four, six, eight until they're gone. You know, and the other thing, you know, that I didn't bring up to you guys is that, you know, it goes back to, you know, could you do a hundred lots? Could you use, you know, we have to get through approximately ninety lots before this developer sees a profit, because the engineering's all paid upfront, the pump station's all paid upfront, and you got to pay for your per-phase infrastructure. So it all goes back to the risk and versus reward, are you willing to do it? I mean, it's, you're going to go two, you know, potentially four years before you get paid anything?
Jake, have, you mentioned that you'd spent, you know, round number seven years speaking with Rubino, and I know you did, you did have some conversations with Barry, and I'm guessing, and I'm guessing that different landowners have different needs, needs or wants.
Well said.
For, for, for their value.
Yes.
Some are reasonable, and some are a little off the scale.
Very correct.
Have you, have, have, these been the only two property owners that you've chatted with, recognizing again that you had some early-on conversations with Barry here a few years ago? But as, as we take a look, I was just looking at the map that I think Jeff Benway kind of did a rough outline, highlighted, you know, if there was a sewer in this area, you know, what is that, what could that serve? You know, so it's a pretty, pretty large land mass. Have you had any broader conversations with folks other than, you know, the Rubino and company and the Smith as it relates to?
I'm, I'm going to put my foot in my mouth when I tell you this, but I've talked to everybody.
Yeah, okay. I, I mean, I would have, knowing, knowing, you know, how, how you operate and how you have to, you know, always be looking for what's that next project, I would have, I would assume that that's what the answer.
Well, you canvassed the properties, I presume, to find the best.
I talked, I talked to everybody that owns property. And some people will talk to you, some people will swear at you and scare you off their front stump.
Yep.
And there's a lot of the people that this piece of property touches are not interested in developing the property, they don't want to sell their property, talk to my kids when I'm dead. You know, I get a lot of that. You know, can I always ask, can I, can I follow up with you in a couple of months? No. You know, you know, Tellarico Properties, when I've talked to those people for years, they will not sell. They don't have to sell.
So that next generation, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road?
That's correct.
Right.
I agree with Andy. I'm not, I mean, two-hundred-and-seven to me is too intense. I don't know where the, the finish line is or what the, the number is, but the incentive zoning applications that I have been involved with have been much smaller, and I would say much more localized, and they've sort of completed or filled out a little niche within that region of town. This, to me, for the incentive zoning, I don't know if it necessarily warrants a true incentive zoning or looking at it in that sense, because it's in the middle of town in an area that is not really earmarked anywhere as needed to be rezoned. And then, you know, part of what I was asking Jeff to do is, is sort of give me an idea of a build-out, because what, what this will do is, it could potentially open up twenty, thirty, forty incentive zoning applications that I don't think the board wants to entertain, I certainly don't want to. And the full, a full build-out at this potential R-one-twelve could be close to a thousand homes, based on Jeff's, you know, rough numbers. You know, that, that to me is, is significant. And not only that, I agree with Paul a hundred percent on the incentive. It doesn't warrant the incentive, because it's a self-serving incentive for the developer. It, there's, there's, right now, the incentive that's being floated is the pump station or the infrastructure that will service the two-hundred-and-seven lots that is being requested or wanted by the developer, as well as a whole slew of potential incentive zoning applications that could come down the road. So, you know, I don't want to go down the slippery slope tonight of what an incentive zone application and what, I mean, we stipulated before that it needs to be used for various, the incentive has to be used for various infrastructure and/or purposes, but, you know, the, the, the building of a pump station to basically service those homes and any other new homes, to me, is not a true incentive to the town of Penfield.
So, so let me ask you guys this, then. So you, you guys do not see a benefit to this, bringing sewer to this part of town?
I, this part of town has not had sewer forever. I, I don't know.
You don't see a benefit to it?
I don't know where the incentive is. I mean, in the comprehensive plan, I served on the committee four or five years ago now, you know, we, we talked about, you know, various pockets of town and neighborhoods where maybe higher density was warranted. At that point, I believe Abington was, was coming down the pike, or maybe online at that point, I can't remember, but one of the sections, because it was closer to the town of Webster, was that area north of Plank. I, I don't recall if we discussed areas south of Plank, but, you know, not everyone agreed with, with every proposal that was in that, but I, I did not think that that area of town, what we're discussing right now, both north and south sides of Plank and Jackson in the center of town, really, in my mind, was where we were going to have the next hotbed of development. I mean, we have a mixed-use committee now that's underway, looking at what we did envision as the potential hotbed for development, which is the Atlantic two-fifty corridor. So I think this is sort of between where we are looking with Abington and North and the two-fifty corridor and the two-fifty Atlantic.
And I think, I think you've said it the best of anybody, because that's how I've been feeling all along, that the, you know, incentive zoning, what we've been doing of late, it really has been to fulfill something that's zoned there, you know, like you want to extend sewers, so where there's gaps, where there's need. This is creating something that wasn't needed, you know? I mean, it hasn't shown that something can't be developed within the confines of what it's zoned as. There, there hasn't been that, that proof demonstrated, but the incentive just doesn't seem to, to be anything that we're, we're looking towards, because it's almost creating an issue versus finishing something to, to benefit public at large that their sewer, like their sewer going from Fellows Road down to Perrington, that kind of thing. When you connected that, that was, that was something that was finishing off something, that was bringing an extension. This is just creating something, almost like a, almost like putting sidewalks out and where there's no other sidewalks to connect to. You know, it's just, why? For, for all the density, you know, the two-hundred, it doesn't give credence to what is good for the town.
And I think just, just because something can be deemed a benefit, I'm not going to say I agree that it's a benefit in terms of the, the way we look at a benefit in incentive zoning applications, but just because something offers a potential benefit does not mean that the detriments don't outweigh that benefit, or that the ramifications don't outweigh that benefit. And certainly a boon of residential development in an area that has not been targeted as such by our residents who've served on the committees and, and, and developed the plans, that, that sometimes, I think, and in this case, could potentially lead to more of a detriment than a benefit. Again, I don't think that the benefit rises to the level of incentive zoning benefit. Certainly, you know, added infrastructure, improved infrastructure, that's, that's a benefit, certainly, but it's not a solid line that, that, you know, can't be crossed by detriment.
So for you, if, if sewers were to be extended, there'd have to be a rationale for doing it, such as multiple failures of septic systems along the road, say Plank Road, where any septic system was failing, he was going to solve that problem by...
That may, that may be a component. I mean, that certainly is a...
But I mean, it's solving a problem, it's not just creating, creating a new community.
And I, and I look at it, and, you know, back to, you know, just building it with sixty-two lots, is that going to be done? Absolutely. But, you know, how are, how are you going to sell sixty-two houses at five-hundred-thousand dollars? It's going to take you a very long time, and if somebody's willing to do that, then...
Well, there's, there's, there's markets for that. I mean, like, like anything else. I mean, just across, down the road and across the street, you have Nick DeAngelo that has eleven lots, and he's proposing four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-plus or minus. Those eleven lots will probably last him his lifetime, and then some.
One, two a year?
But, but he's looking at one or two a year, and that probably satisfies, that probably satisfies, you know, him and his family and his needs and what have you. Obviously, if, if Ryan Holmes were building eleven homes a year, they'd be out of business probably that first year. I mean, it's just, it's, it's just two different, two different needs or two different entities and what have you.
And, and you guys know that, you know, the town better than I do, you know, if you, if you look at, if you look at the parcels that are left that are, are developable, there's not very many, unless you cross two-fifty. I mean, and then, you know, back to the con-plan, you know, the con-plan, you know, targeted the area that's north of Plank, you know, and you look at that, and you kind of scratch your head and like, you know, why? Because it's loaded with wetlands. It's loaded with rock, you know, it's, it's almost, you can't develop the property, you know? And then, when we were in with the Berry Farm, you know, we, we talked about, you know, hey, you know, the, the con-plans talk for two-point-five lots per acre, we were well below that, and it was too dense, it was too dense. So, you know, I, I look at it, and I, you know, I appreciate, you know, what you guys are all telling me, and I don't disagree with any of it, but, you know, if you look at the parcels that are left to be developed, you know, you talk about a benefit of doing something that's an infill. An infill, to me, is, is great. Oh, it fills in a piece of property that's around a bunch of residential already, but most of those areas are, are already overly saturated with people and traffic and everything else. This, this property here is going to be way less impact on the town. It's out, you have several different ways to get to the, the expressways. You can go either way from, from a shopping standpoint, to whether you go to Webster or go to Penfield. It's just way less, even though it's two-hundred lots, it's way less impact than doing a hundred lots on Fellows Road. I mean, you, you can't even turn, you can't even turn off from Fellows Road if you, if you drive there, you know, and you're leaving, leaving the subdivision there. So, and I, I appreciate that, appreciate all that, and, you know, my, my whole thing was, if the town doesn't see a benefit to the pump station in Forest Main, then we're all wasting our time, because it has to be a benefit to you guys. I mean, I've, I've been part of several other incentive zoning applications with the town, and it used to be the dollar value. It's not like that anymore, we know that. But you, you guys have to see a benefit.
Right, right.
You know, and to me, the benefit is, it goes beyond just putting density on a, on a subdivision. The benefit is, you know, eventually, you know, maybe when we're all gone out of this board and my, my business, you know, the sewer's there, and you guys control what goes in there. It's, you guys, it's an incentive, it's an incentive zoning application, you know, unless you come in for a zone change, which isn't going to happen. You guys make the decision. You guys tell me that you're not going to accept incentive, incentive zoning application, like, what am I, I can't get an attorney, I can't, so what am I going to do? You told me no. I move on to the next project. Something I can do about it.
Have, did, did you look for this property? And I don't, I don't know the answer to this, and I might be putting you in a position that you don't know the answer to this. Can, can any of that property flow to the south and tie into the sewer south of this property?
Yes, and that's another thing that we talked about, was, again, going back to the density and the cost, is that if we tied our sewer into Jackson Road, or we tied it into Webster, it's a lot less money, because you have half the amount of Forest Main. You still have the pump station, regardless. You know, and, and I don't know all the details, but, you know, there is things that can be addressed with this Jackson sewer, from what I've been told.
You do bring up a good point, though. We are the ones that directed that sanitary sewer system to, to Shoe Craft Road. It wasn't, that's something that he came up with.
No.
We looked at that, because if we were to develop that area, we wanted there to be enough people as part of that entrance fee to get into that area to make it palpable to develop that sanitary sewer for everybody. If, if he goes off or others go off to, to Webster or to Jackson, I'm not sure he can go to Webster, there's still that problem, but Jackson.
Yes, capacity problems.
You're taking, you're taking that lot of units out, where now it's going to be on somebody else's burden to develop it. Instead of six-hundred thousand, it might be a million dollars, whatever the case may be.
And then, and just back to the overall impact of the town, is, and you guys know this, if you look at the active subdivisions that are in your, in your municipality right now, and you look at the subdivisions that are coming, there is none. I mean, you're going to have very little, not, not that it matters whether you like or you dislike, there's going to be very little building going on in your town in the, within, within five years. You're going to be, you're pulling less than twenty building permits a year. But you may not care, but, I mean, because the market's going to shift. I mean, if you look at, if you look at the housing market, Webster was booming like crazy, okay? That, that kind of stopped, it moved to Penfield. Penfield stops, it's going to go back to, it's going to move somewhere. You know, there's, there's going to, there's always going to be a demand for housing. I mean, it's gone down, I mean, went from, from the peak of three-thousand building permits in our municipality, surrounding municipalities, down to nine-hundred, so we've taken a big hit, but there's still going to be building that's going on. You know, and this, in this project, when this project comes out, it's, it's almost like it's the sole subdivision in the town of Penfield. Mascot will be done. DeAngelo will have his eleven lots. I mean, there, Abington was probably the only subdivision that's going to have lots left. That's it.
Rob, just to bring you up to speed a little bit, you referenced Jeff Benway's calculations, and you were on target. You didn't get a chance to attend the last meeting. At that meeting, I had a chance to talk to Mark DiFresco.
Okay.
Who actually went back and did some fine tuning on that list. And it was, it was actually done at the time that Crown Point was proposed, because Crown Point, they did a sewer study for the entire watershed that would be served by the service area for the sewer. He got that down to about six-hundred, and that was before Crown Point came in, which is about a hundred. So, his, he's envisioning, and it goes back to the comment that Jake made about EPods and what, you know, particularly wetlands being the dominant feature, but it comes down to about five-hundred units that would have to be looked at as a vital tally for that, for that watershed and that service area.
And the other thing that, that's not looked at by the municipality, when you go through and you look at this, these sewer calculations, a lot of rock. There's a lot of rock in those, in those parcels that you're, you're not going to develop. I don't care, if it's bedrock, you can forget it, unless somebody decides they want to build slab-on-grade, which not many people do nowadays, there's a lot of rock in that
In that, in that quadrant that is defined by what I'll call north of, north of Plank, shy of Webster, two-fifty, south of Plank, and Shoe Craft Road.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of rock. We, we did thirty test holes on Ben's property, there's rock all over. You know, it's manageable because of the depth, but there's a lot of rock in that area.
Okay. Certainly, some more things to think about. You know, and I don't think, I know myself, and I'm, and I'm sure the board isn't, you know, in a position to make any, any commitments or, you know, any further thoughts than, you know, than what we originally discussed a couple of weeks ago, but certainly, you have provided some additional information materials. You know, I might, I might suggest that, you know, this is a better, to me, this is a better forum to have these kind of conversations. Again, no disrespect to the engineers, and no disrespect to the attorneys, but, you know, you got a twenty, thirty-thousand-dollar PowerPoint that looks...
How do you know that?
That looks nice, that looks nice. And, and, you know, I think we, this board, has been sensitive to that, to do more what I would call brainstorming. And I get the fact, everybody, everybody is, is in a hurry, and everybody wants, but, you know, you know, I think this board has, has said, you know, we want to, we want to talk about these things, we want to look at them, we want to do some brainstorm, we want to get some additional information, we might, you know, want to come back and have some additional broad conversations and what have you, and, you know... And, you know, I don't think anybody around this table is gonna feel pressured that, you know, if I need a decision, I need a decision by today or I need a decision by tomorrow, you know, until we vet everything out. Because as we're taking a look at this area, we're also taking a look as how does it fit into the overall, you know, four corners of, of Penfield or the four boundaries of Penfield to make sure that, you know, we're, we're doing the right thing. Because this, when we do it, it's here for, you know, forever, so to speak.
And if you, if, you know, if you look at the zoning maps, which I'm sure all you guys have, you know, and you got back, there's very few parcels that are left that are on the other side of two fifty. And this is one of the parcels. And even though it kind of looks like it's out in the middle of nowhere, it's kind of always gonna look that way because you, you have all the open spaces gotta remain here, all the wetlands, the swamp and everything. And, you know, the thing that, you know, for takeaways, I just want you guys to think about is just, you know, think about, try, try not to focus on the immediate impact of two hundred plus lots. You know, think about the longevity and the, and that this is gonna be built in phases. And it's really, in a way, gonna be the only building that's going on in the town by the time the thing gets approved. So, in terms of an impact, in terms of building going on, it's, it's not like we're gonna have, you're gonna have the Ryan Homes you have now. We have a model on every corner in the town. And right now, I have three models in the town. You know, it's one model. It's, it's, you know, it's minimal impact from that standpoint and traffic and everything else. And, you know, and I'll just leave you with that. We've done a lot of business in this town in the last ten years and we really, really enjoy working with you guys in the group here. And I think if you ask anybody that's, that's on your team in the municipality, that we're a good partner to have. We're asked to do something, we do it. We do it quickly. We react. And there's never an argument with, with anything except for an occasional sign argument. That's about it.
That's okay. It's every, it's good. Family, family argues, which is, which is good.
Absolutely.
I, I find myself on the receiving end of arguments on a regular basis. And mostly on the losing end of that. But, yeah, but, you know, so there'll always be, you know, there is no, no relationship that's a hundred percent perfect.
Exactly.
That's a good segue, though, when you mention in terms of, you know, when, when the town asks Ryan Holmes to do something, it gets done. And I would concur with what Tony said. You mentioned how much has been spent so far on engineering and tests and plans. And I'll make it clear that none, none of that was requested by the town.
I know that.
That's completely what every developer comes in and that's exactly, you know, as you know better than we do, that's how, that's how the, the business goes. So, just to make it clear that there was nothing, you know, so that was requested by us to be done. So, however, whatever the PowerPoint someone decide need to be done, you know, whatever the, the volume of papers and submissions, that's, that's the choice that was made by, by your clients.
I know that. I think you did a great job, you know, with it overall, but I, but I, I agree with you. And, you know, I just ask you guys to, you know, to really, really think big picture. And, you know, if, if I have to come in here for several more meetings and just talk about the density, you know, what I'd like to eventually end with, whether it's one meeting or ten meetings is, you know, just, just give me a number of density that works. Because, you know, obviously, it's free for me to come in here and sit with you and talk to you guys. I'll come in here as much as you want me to. But at the end of the day, if, if it comes to a certain number of lots, then we're all, I'm wasting your time, you're wasting my time.
And we, we get that. We appreciate that. And, and that's not our intent either. You know, we're not, not that, not that you're, you're a bad fellow, but I don't necessarily need to see you every two weeks. You know, and I'm sure you would rather be looking at your kids rather than, than, than this modeling group every two weeks. So, I get that.
A lot of soccer games are going on right now.
A lot of soccer games. Okay. Great.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for the input, the feedback and do, do appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you for your time, you guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Okay, that, that addresses our guest. John, thank you as well. We'll move on to action items and we have the one and the only Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just wanted to bring the town board a little up to date on where we are with Baytown. That obviously was a rezoning project back from two thousand and twelve with this group. And there was many conditions as part of that approval for that rezoning. The planning board has been working through that along with the DeMarco Group, the applicant. And kind of wanted to bring the board up to date on, on some of those features. Just kind of running down through them, most of the elements are in place or were in place beforehand. Creation of a large earthen berm, allowing for cross-access easements to existing businesses. Construction of a center turn lane, prohibition of outdoor amplified intercom system, improvements for pedestrian safety, maintaining maximum pole height of thirty feet or less, construction of enclosed loading docks, elimination of the three curb cuts in Brant Point Drive, proposed parking located at least four hundred feet away from Jewelry Drive, proposed berm and wall wrapping around the existing Walmart building, the new and existing, and then enhancing the landscaping on Brant Point Drive. There are two points that I would like to discuss, though. First, one of the requirements was a connection to Sovereign Drive.
Mark, can I just, Dark Sky compliant lights, I believe, was a part of that, too?
And they're actually proposing LED lights, which the planning board has, has suggested, you know, more recently with the, with the applicants and they are looking to do that.
Mark, when you say that you have a couple of things you wanna discuss with us, are these coming from the planning board? So, the planning board is looking for further direction?
No, I just kind of wanna give you, bring you guys up to date that we're work, the planning board's working on some of these elements.
This is an action item, so.
There's some potential complication with, with some of the, the issues on it and I wanted to bring it to the board if, if there's additional concern.
Let Mark go through his.
So, I kind of went through the ones that are in the works and going on. One of the requirements was the connection to Sovereign Drive. We believe that we had a valid easement over the entire Sovereign Drive. That was something that was put in place back in, well, easement was, was filed in two thousand and one. That came from, and it was initial, Town Board rezoning in nineteen ninety-four, Planning Board Resolution ninety-eight approved it, two thousand updates and things through that. Through this process, we've worked the DeMarco Group to show how the connection to Sovereign Drive would happen, how that would, would come out. We talked about it in the, in the site hearing. And during the site hearing, the Sovereign Acquisitions, AKA Uncle Bob's Group, came out and has subsequently challenged that easement. They've submitted papers saying that they don't believe that the easement can be expanded. They believe the easement is valid, that the easement was granted across their property to Baytown proper, as we call it, that SBL number. Now, they're saying that the intent of the town is to expand that easement, allowing now connection to Super Walmart area beyond that. So, we had a sit-down meeting with the Sovereign owners, including the Nolan's Party Rental, John Decker, who owns some of the empty property, was Galal property, and Pam Decker, who owns the all-state business on the north side of the property along with Uncle Bob's Group and their attorney. The DeMarco Group was there as well. So, they are working towards trying to make that connection happen. The initial comment was we didn't, from Uncle Bob's Group, we don't like the alignment of what the road is. The DeMarco Group offered to realign it, make some improvements if they didn't like the alignment of where that lined up. They made the statements that we can't, we have some concerns with our customers crossing from our internal storage building or office to the outside storage areas. The DeMarco Group offered to make a tabletop, you know, as you would see in like the Webster Plaza, kind of a raised area that people could cross. You know, you're, you're passing with, you know, pedestrians in the area to slow down. They also had some concerns about, you know, shared cost of maintenance, plowing, update to that road. The DeMarco Group also offered to have a proportionate share of maintenance based on trip traffic. So, I believe the engineering department is putting two counters out on the road to quantify how much traffic there is existing, how much is in the future. So, working with our planning board attorney, we are reviewing the Sovereign Drive, Uncle Bob's application. They are not in compliance with several of the past resolutions from the planning board. Some of the planning board conditions required them to pave to the property line.
What do you say, they, who do you mean?
They, Uncle Bob's. Uncle Bob's bought the property, I believe, in two thousand and five. Some of the resolutions predate them owning the property, but obviously, once they bought the property, they bought the resolutions that approved it. So, there is some resolutions that said they need to be installed sidewalks across their property. Those have not been installed. They need to pave to their property line, which would then be, you know, only a, a short distance to the, the DeMarco property, the Baytown property. So, working with the planning board attorney, we are sending them some letters. We don't believe they ever obtained their conditional use permit, which was a requirement of the planning board resolution in nineteen ninety-eight. So, we're sending them a letter saying, we don't believe you have a conditional use permit. We'd like to know how you're going to obtain one and we have concerns that you're not currently in compliance with the resolutions that are out there today. So, I kind of just wanted to bring this to this town board. As the planning board is moving ahead, is trying to comply with the conditions we're putting by the town board, DeMarco Group is, you know, has been making good faith effort to make those connections and to meet that standard. We are having some legal issues making that connection at this point.
Uncle Bob's, though, you should know Uncle Bob's was not the original applicant.
Originally was, originally was Walt Decker and then I think it went to Bay Empire Self-Storage. And that's the part that, you know, we've shared with, with their attorney. Obviously, they, you know, care to disagree at this point, but we are pursuing that. So, just wanted to make this board aware that, you know, the planning board and the applicant are trying to make good on that, that condition. But at this point, you know, we are having some legal issues to, to meet that point of the, that condition.
So, there's a little bit of a delay in that regard because of the legal issues.
So, you know, but, you know, the planning board is moving through the rest of the application. You know, is, is completing the review in a lot of the other areas and, you know, may wanna look to move ahead with the remaining of the project, you know, without this connection. So, that's why I wanted to, you know, first bring that, you know, discussion to this board, that it was a condition of your rezoning to make that connection.
Right. Okay. So, keep us posted as things progress. Sounds like there's a number of things in the hopper that, that are being addressed.
Did have, there was one comment about the fencing that I know that's been out there. They did propose a, originally talked about a concrete fence material. They originally came in with a vinyl kind of resin material. They've since gone back to the concrete fence wall.
This is on top of the berms?
That was on top of the berms. They're going back to the, the concrete.
Is that at the direction or request of the planning board?
No, that actually was a condition of the town board, was to have a concrete fence wall. Originally, I thought I'd have to come back and ask, or have the applicant come back and ask for a waiver from that. They've subsequently gone back to the other material.
They rethought that.
The only other question that has come up, and it was not a condition of the town board, was the transfer of ownership of Brant Point Drive. The town board basically says they need to enter in an agreement with the town that they share in the cost of wear and tear over that. The applicant is fully well-meaning to comply with that. Some question from staff has come up is whether that would be better owned by the DeMarco Group. Obviously, the DeMarco Group is not in favor of that. You know, they would rather, you know, that stay in the town's hands. It hasn't gained much traction thus far with the planning board. And obviously, there's Canada Bank, National Bank and others that currently access off of Brant Point Drive that I don't know would have much interest in having that right-of-way abandoned and now have to enter, you know, a second or third-party agreement with a private owner. So, I believe the letter went to the supervisor a few months ago about that, but I also wanna bring it to the board's attention. But the biggest being the connection to Sovereign Drive, that, that may be an issue making that connection at this time. The attorneys are still working on it. The planning board, obviously, would still require them at least to pave up to the property line or some elements. But that's one piece that they're having issue complying with.
I was looking at some of the elevation documents that were online today and I just happened to ask about the enclosed loading docks. They are enclosed, is that correct?
They are. There's just not doors on the front. So, it has roof and has walls all the way around it. It's just open because there's three loading docks. So, the trucks would just back into a, it is enclosed. There's just not a, a front face to that.
So, how much of the truck can actually make it into the bay?
I believe a hundred percent, a hundred percent of the truck would be in the bay. It's just that there's not a, like a door that closes on the outside of it, so to speak. They can back in. Part of this board talked about having, you know, loops all the way around. You can go either direction. So, there's loading docks that face north, loading docks that face south. So, no matter which way you can come in, it minimizes the backups of trying to back all the way into the site. You can pull around just to a short back into that area and then vice versa, you know, reverse back into that. But the other conditions, you know, I was just going through those and that's one that, you know, stuck out. And I knew that was a condition of the town boards. I wanted to bring it to you guys and keep you updated on that. We're still pursuing it, the planning board's pursuing it, but the planning board may look to move ahead with the project, you know, potentially without the full compliance with that one condition.
Okay. Okay. All right. Questions? Other questions for Mark?
Thank you.
Guys, thanks, Rob. Mark, thanks for the, for the update on that item. Thank you very much. Okay, you're still up with the, the waiver of sixty-seven Bella Drive. The board, I gave the board the copies you gave me this afternoon, so they've had an opportunity to, to look at it.
There's any condition of the planning board compliance with the sidewalk policy. This is a one lot. New subdivision, new lot at the end of Bella Drive. So, first and, first and foremost, the applicant is asking for a waiver from the sidewalk policy. PRC was supportive of that, as was the planning board. So, that's the first request, is the waiver from installing the sidewalk.
And that seems like an easy one from us, kind of consistent with what we've done.
There's no other sidewalks in the area. There's no sidewalks on Shoe Craft Road. There's obviously no sidewalks in Bella Drive. So, there's really nothing to tie into.
And we have the memo from the applicant here that lays out the criteria as to how that, that waiver is necessary.
The second part of that request, though, typically, this board, in lieu of installing the sidewalks, usually has a five hundred dollar waiver fee. This applicant has laid out in their letter how they feel that, that fee is, is not necessary in this situation. There is an existing, call it a cul-de-sac. It's a little bit of an atypical design that was installed. It has kind of been modified over the years. The town has added a little bit on to that in order to make sure we can get our plow trucks around it, get school buses around it. That wasn't in an easement. That's something the planning board's looking to revise as part of this application, is put that in an easement and revise that.
Yeah, so that, that was the item that stuck out with me that, you know, says that we recently expanded the cul-de-sac without an easement or permission. And so, that kind of raised a flag in my mind. We just decided one day to go out and do that.
Let me ask you, I, I think, I mean, down at the end, because Bella sort of has like a weird T at the end. So, are we talking straight down?
No, this, this new lot is on the north side. It's off the end of where that lump is or that cul-de-sac portion is.
So, so about, about a hundred yards before you get to the end of Bella, there's that little offshoot on the right.
That's exactly where the, that's where the home was going to be.
And that's where there's, back to Tony's question, that's where a cul-de-sac has been.
That piece is not in, totally within the right-of-way. That is, I believe that portion of it was done, I don't know when, shortly after it was constructed, probably the sixties or seventies. There was a piece off of the end that they continually had problems. There was a creek crossing at the very end of it that kept sloughing off and falling in. The highway department, at some point, and I don't know the date.
That was done at the request of the landowner.
Put a pipe in there, filled backfill that and then redid the pavement. And I believe that's the portion that he said was most recently done. I believe the original cul-de-sac portion was, was done in the.
Well, I know for a fact that, because I met the landowner and the landowner walked me out to the end of the street and showed me, and I'm talking at the very end.
Yes.
And it was at his request that I contacted the supervisor in the public works. So, they put that on their queue. So, that, I mean, this is three, three, four years ago.
So, so the expansion, it says here that, you know, didn't have permission from the landowner. What you're saying is they did have permission from the landowner.
Right. And I, no, I should, I don't know who the landowner was at the very end of the street. There's the conservancy back there somewhere, right? No, no, I don't know. Is that a map?
Change from Crossville went in.
You don't even need to, you can probably slide right in the center there and it will stretch your neck.
So, you can see the new house proposed at the, the top towards Rob. You can see kind of the bump out, which is the cul-de-sac. This portion at the end here used to discharge somewhere in this location and run up to this creek. So, most recently, a catch basin was added here. This pipe was added and then what portion of pavement and backfill was done for this piece. But this portion, I believe, was done shortly after it was constructed initially in order to loop people around.
No, I see where we are. This is the bump out on the right.
That's, that's Mr. Peter's driveway that, you know, goes up there. This is the last existing house. There is another house here. So, this one would be across from that. This bump out here is a portion that's not within an easement. The planning board is negotiating to get an easement over that.
Which is the right thing to do.
This little bump out here is currently not in the right-of-way. So, again, the planning board is getting the easement over this and then negotiating for right-of-way so that the road is fully within that piece of the right-of-way. So, the portion of what possibly could be sidewalk, we're getting a. So the portion of what possibly could be sidewalk, we're getting an easement over it as we typically do. As Mr. Peters explains, that this 13 feet would basically be the only spot you could install sidewalks, sidewalks to be, were to be installed.
So when you talked about it, PRC, what was the, what was the thoughts of the group?
PRC obviously was supportive of the waiver. PRC did not get into whether the $500.
That's a Town Board decision.
Was valid or not.
They'll comment on the waiver aspect based on sidewalk, sidewalk policy, sidewalks in the area. It's us that have to bite that, it's us that have to bite the bullet on the 500.
I understand that, but I just wondered if they may have thoughts about the argument he presented, the reasoning. I mean, is the argument?
The PRC didn't weigh in on that.
Is the argument a valid argument?
Is it the full distance or is it the 13 feet that you just mentioned?
We're getting an easement in the full distance.
So 13 feet.
But 13 feet would be the only spot that the sidewalk would make sense, otherwise it's, it's already paved.
This is all, this is all paved here. This is all, this is all paved here and then the only sidewalk piece is this 13, this 13 foot here and this little triangle.
Can't we prorate it for 13 feet and call it even?
You know, I mean, we certainly, we certainly could. I mean, what I, what I might suggest to the board that we think about is, is that we've got, we've got a, a situation that, over time, whenever that was, you know, 60s, 70s, somewhere in there, we, we did some extra paving to get our plows and the buses and UPS and all garbage trucks and all those other things there. And we did it either with a handshake or, you know, obviously, if it's only come to light now, it couldn't have been bothering people for too long. But the right thing to do is, is, you know, get the easement. So I might, I might suggest that, you know, waive, waive the sidewalk. And in this particular case, because of the unusual nature of it, I would waive the $500 provided that all the easements be granted to the town and everything be cleared up and the record set forth.
I would support that, too.
That would be my recommendation.
I just want to say that, for the record, the landowner I spoke with was on the south side of the street.
Okay. He would be the neighbor.
Right, so that's the gentleman I spoke with about extending the street a little bit further to help with some of the drainage.
Okay.
Because he had a catch base and I think end in his driveway or something real weird.
So the applicant may not even be aware that that.
Right, so I just, now that I know that the house, the land in question is on the north side, I just want to set the record straight that I spoke with the gentleman on the south side.
The easements aren't necessarily from, be granted by Jim Peters. It's from someone else.
I don't care, I don't care who does it.
Well, no, but I mean, if you're saying to waive the $500, that's specific to one person, but asking for the easements, that's a separate, that's a separate one.
I'm tying it together.
But we, yeah, we, it's not, it's not uncommon to have an applicant or a neighbor have to get an easement from a neighbor.
Mr. Peters owns all of the property, or Nancy Peters owns all of the property today. It's been subdivided off of their lot. So ultimately, Mr. Shambry, I believe, is his potential owner, but right now Nancy Peters owns all of the property. The easement is being negotiated as part of his approval, but I don't know if they've closed on it yet. The lot hasn't been created.
No, it just isn't clear there because it says the person that owns the property with easement, you know, well, if it's himself, his wife, well, that's different than looking to, I mean, if that's the case, then it makes sense because then it's all encompassing and not to worry about, you know, talking to more than one person to answer the question that, you know, tying some other person to the waiver, the $500. That's all it was.
I've got no problem tying someone else to the $500. Because it's as consistent with development as granting easements of adjoining properties. It's actually rare to have one person own all of the area that needs to be deeded.
Would you like to have a name associated, a lock associated, it's sort of just hanging there? It's not very clear exactly what the parcel.
Generally, I would not be in favor of this, however, both what Tony and Paul said, I agree with, is let's make sure we do have the easements that we need and if that is the carrot, the stick.
That includes, that includes the 13, that includes the 13 foot there because down the road, 10 years, 20 years, whatever, so that you get the 13 foot, you get the easement for that, you clear up the easement on the radius, what that was extended, if there's an issue on the drainage piece, that we get that as well. So that all of it is, all of it is, you know, corrected, it's, and taken care of.
One more clarification. The, the cost of the filing of the easements would be on the applicant for that, to clean that stuff up?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that.
Typically is.
I just want to make sure that that's the clarification. In order to clean that up, that would kind of offset the, that $500 cost of, you know, they would take care of the engineering and the filing fees and everything else to, to clean up that situation. Okay.
Anything else for staff?
No. As long as the town gets a benefit from this arrangement by having those easements, I think that's acceptable.
Well, I mean, my, my first reaction is, is that we have the insurance company sitting here today saying, you know, you're, you're bringing your equipment on, you're doing things and you don't have an easement. I just think that that gives us a lot of exposure.
Okay.
And I think having that, whether it's a town-dedicated road or if it's, in this case, it gives us more opportunity for turning radiuses and whatever, it just seems having the, having the legal right to go across there, you know, is, it just better protects the town.
Well, in the event that the land turns over to someone else, it's, it's there as well for future landowners.
Okay, we'll move on to 222 Parkview Purchase Agreement. And essentially, what that is, is that 222 Parkview Drive is a small parcel that was foreclosed on, is currently owned by the county. Dick and I, Mark DiFrancesco, met with Tim Murphy, Tim Murphy from County of Monroe, who is part of the real estate gang. One of the things that we, we had two opportunities. One was to request an easement across the, across that for our pump station or to acquire that. To acquire that is the amount of the taxes, which amounts to $227. That will be our purchase price. Our recommendation would be to put in a resolution authorizing myself with Dick's blessing to move forward, to ask the county and then to authorize the $227 payment for that. The county is willing to put that in their next ledge cycle, which means that would come before the ledge in the June, the June timeframe. So at the June ledge meeting, so if that's okay, we'll move forward with that.
We've heard about that in the past.
And then we'll, and we'll own that and we don't have to worry about issues for that. That clears up one of four or five items that we've got. The others, we're trying to work through, one with some easements from property owners. And then we've got one issue that's part of the Fino Picora estate, that Dick is working on that to try to get an easement for that. So, okay, we'll get, we'll get a resolution in for that purchase agreement. Okay. We drop down to consignment shop, Mr. Costello.
Yeah, it's just a quick FYI. I just wanted you to be aware of the fact that I'm going to be putting a resolution in. I have a young lady who wants to take over the previous chocolate shop, the previous cupcake shop, previous whatever, in 1865 Pennfield Road. She would like to install a clothing consignment shop on the site and she needs to go through the process. It's new and distinctly different use than what was there before. So unlike the other lady that was here tonight, she does need to go through the process for a finish.
Maybe she's the one that was the chocolate person from Naples?
Yes.
And has got her.
That's wrong, yep.
Do you know that?
So this lady is interested in opening that consignment shop.
Did she even open? I mean, did she even open?
You know, Tony, that's a very good question. I'm not sure she ever really did.
Yeah, it was almost, it appeared to be like a storage, like a inventory type. I mean, there was stuff.
She did some painting and cleaned up, cleaned up the site.
There were special hours, too. There was nobody there. Right. Right.